All right, and Chairman Morant, can you hear us? Chairman Morant. All right, everybody stand by just a moment. A little bit of technical difficulty, sorry about that, we'll be right back. We can hear you now, yes sir.
You can hear me now, okay.
And we are live whenever you're ready, sir.
Okay, good evening everyone. We apologize for the technical issues here, but you know, in these days and times, we're trying to do things virtually, so there will be some hiccups along the way. It is now, well, it's now 5:39 February 23rd, and this meeting of Georgetown County Council is being called to order. I see that we do have a forum. Councilmember Carolina, will you lead us in the invocation and pledge, please?
Yes, thank you, good evening. Please bow your head as I pray. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today in person and virtual. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself and for the measure of health, and as we fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing responsibilities. Thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us from your boundless and gracious nature. Dear Father, we pray for the restoration of our democratic order and for the elimination of this pandemic upon the land. Give us wisdom to govern under conflicting interests of our times and give us a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people. Give us a keen thirst for justice and righteousness. Give us confidence in what is good and fitting. Give us the ability to work together in harmony even when there's honest disagreements. And give us personal peace in our lives as we serve the people we represent. I pray for this agenda set before us today and ask for assurance of what would please and benefit those who live and work in Georgetown County, South Carolina. It is your most blessed name we pray, amen.
To flag the United States of America, to the republic, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Carolina, for giving us an invocation and a pledge. There are no recommended changes to the published, published meeting agenda. May I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Move we approve the agenda.
Just a second.
A second.
Any discussion? Again, since we are meeting virtually, we're going to do a roll call vote. You can just respond yea or nay, as far as approval of the agenda. Councilmember Anderson?
Yea.
Councilmember Carolina?
Yea.
Mr. Johnson?
Yea.
Mr. Newton?
Yea.
And Mr. Thomas?
Yea.
And the chairman vote is yea also. County Council sets aside 30 minutes at the beginning of each meeting to allow for public comments. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period have been asked to sign up with a quirk of council in advance of the meeting. Madam clerk, do we have any speakers signed up?
Mr. Chairman, we do have 11 speakers signed up tonight, so each speaker will have up to three minutes. And the first is Mr. Tranis Parker.
Good evening, Chairman Morant, Councilmember and County Administrator. Mr. Chairman, I request that I can get at least five minutes, please, sir.
Well, let's see where we are, let's, let's go to the beginning and see where we are, we'll go from there, okay?
Yes, sir.
At that particular time, we'll see where we are, thank you.
My name is Tranis Parker. As always, I'd like to thank you guys for all that you do for the city and the county of Georgetown. I commend you for having to deal with citizens' complaint daily. Somebody has to do it, but why not you? Thank you. I'm here representing the citizens of District Four, Spring Gully Community, where never before have we received $1 million to be used by the council member as they saw fit. Thanks, Miss County Administrator, for bringing this idea, and if it wasn't yours, still, thank you. The problem is, District Four council member never consulted with her constituents that helped generate the money or how the money should be spent. District Four citizens, along with other organizations, have been meeting with council member for District Four for many years. Numerous times discussing our needs for our district. In December 2018, council member met with the Coalition of Community Groups, the Spring Gully Group, the West End Civil Council, and the Citizens for Progress and Empowerment for the Change at Howard Center. The meeting took place as a direct result of projects being constructed and money being spent in our district without conferring with the constituents. We talked about the dead horse, Eight Oaks, and you councilwoman requested that we no longer talk about it because it was done and let's move on with the future. And that we did, because you said if any significant amount of money or major construction came into the district, you, we would be consulted. We met quarterly for time discussing different needs and issues. I haven't heard from you since. I have taken the council member for District Four through our community and showed her the ditches flooding and the lack of recreation for our children. I've been asking for a park at McDonald's School forever. The late council chairman, Morant, promised basketball goals for our children to be placed on the grounds of McDonald's School. It took the principal to get the phone with Mr. Hemway, and the school district had to get them up. I asked Ms. Johnson, where did she put our million? And was told by council member for District Four, the library board had came to her discussing renovation prior to monies coming available for the district. And when it did come available, I, meaning Ms. Johnson, decided to get $1 million to the library. I asked her, what about the rest of the district? Her statements were, things needed in this district were getting done. She had met with Mr. Funny, and I called Mr. Funny off as an act, specifically, when did councilwoman meet with you? Was anything placed on the calendar to be done? What dates were they scheduled and what dates did discuss this project? Very briefly, things in progress. Lincolnshire, Ms. Jones met with DOT to discuss how they can leverage funding to address road paving issues impacted by a lack of drainage. They need money. Garrison Road, paid consultant, unable to come up with a solution, wasted money. Evans Place, paving underway, I don't even know where that is. Brick Simley Road was outside of our district, under construction. This is the only to bring more traffic through our community, where the only place our children has to play is in the roads. Because we do not have a park except for Eight Oaks that stays locked and takes the acts of Congress to get into it. Things that was finished that he told me about. He stayed the Beck Recreation Multiple, Multi-Use Center and Field is already. Okay, so maybe our children could now get on a boat because of the flooding to get out of our yards and ride from Spring Gully down the four-lane highway to Beck School. Or maybe our children could go down the road, Brick Simley Road, when they finish in two years, a Johnson Road, which is going to be improved too, and go to the parks. Let's see, there's one park in Lance Creek, one park in Dunbar, a huge topi in Choppie, and let's go down to Annie Village, where there might be 50 houses, but they have a park. Okay, things are waiting for the council. Grave Station met in July, they get the community, they did not get a community response. McDonald's School ditches, yes, the ditch around the school is so big, filled with water, it's big enough to submerge the bus. I personally showed council member this ditch years ago. So during improvement of McDonald's School, Ms. Jones, I'm not sure who she is, approached the school with addressing the issue under construction. They stated that they did not have the correct equipment to do the work. Now, I'm no scientist, but removing a school, renovating a school requires a hammer, nails, and screws. Cleaning the ditch for drainage, that deep enough to submerge the bus when full of water, requires big, heavy equipment machinery. I guess we need to hire the right people. Seems like everything in our district needs money. But our councilwoman felt library, felt the library that I'm betting has dropped off 75% of service because of technology. If the library ceiling falls in while it's closed, no one is there, no one gets hurt, council will find the money from somewhere to get it replaced. There are all kinds of grant monies in libraries. Ms. Jean left 1.2 million from my understanding. I've been asking for park at McDonald's School for years. Intersection of Greentown Road and McDonald Road would be perfect, and we need a drainage system. In closing, we voted for one sales tag. A lot falls on how council handles this request today. Voting, voting, voting. There is one thing that I always hope and pray for, is that I do not disappoint God and my family. Councilmember Four, Ms. Lily Jean Johnson, I wish I could look you in your eyes. You have disappointed the Spring Gully family in your district. I'm asking the council to defer all the reading until we can confer with our council member. The $1 million given solely to the county library is disapprovingly unfair, unjust, unacceptable to other communities within the district. I hope District Four Councilmember Lily Jean Johnson makes the motion to defer, and I think that others will follow. Thank you.
Teddy Wilson?
Councilman Morant, council members, first I want to thank you for your service to the Georgetown County residents. Also like to thank you for allowing me to speak to you this afternoon. Because of the, the community, there is some misunderstanding with the use of the surplus project for the Sanford Community Park. And we ask you to defer this reading until we are able to meet with our representative, that we may get further understanding. We predict you will hear to our request, and we ask that, that Councilmember Carolina meet with us to discuss and clear up all misunderstandings. Thank you, and this is regard to the tennis court in the Sanford Park.
Frederick Williams?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, council members. This question...
Yes?
This question is geared specifically for our district representative, Ms. Lily Jean Johnson. It is my understanding that you had a million dollar allocation. In the process of utilizing that money, your district, given its history, is historically underserved with you at the helm. Now, if you did indeed have that money, what is in your normal consciousness that would make you allocate that kind of money, giving all of the high priority stuff that you have in your particular district? Is the library in your district? If indeed those sums of money were needed, why wouldn't council as a whole allocate a portion from each of their money, as opposed to you being the superhuman being allocating all of your district's money solely? When there were other council members who could have siphoned a piece of each and every one of their money to allocate toward the library? And in the process of you doing that, why did you not talk to your constituents to see what their desired needs would have been? Or did you? I doubt it seriously. The meeting that Mr. Parker spoke about, I was in attendance, that was roughly four years ago. Yes, what, Ms. Johnson? You historically have been a bloody stain on this district. And I personally, I'm not speaking as the president of the West End Citizens Council, I'm speaking as a private individual. What I would like for you to do is give me a detailed breakdown, as a private citizen and taxpayer, of what capital improvement projects that you have undertook and finished in this district, since you have been seated in your particular capacity. And if you need some information, I'll leave it with Ms. Freud, so that you can contact me. But I would be interested in seeing, the budget when I took this office was 600, 60 million annually. I'm sure it has risen since that time. And I was curious to see, of that kind of annual money over a 10-year span, $600 million, how much was utilized on the west side? I couldn't find anything that you, you undertook. So, if you would, I think you're doing the people of your particular district a major disservice. You need to do better. I'm not here to reprimand you, I just watch your course of action. You need to really do better. And you need to speak to the people whose money you're utilizing and who you're supposedly serving. I can't see it, I'm Stevie Wonder when it comes to you. I try, but you don't help me. I thank you for your time, council.
Janet Ryon?
Good evening, council, good evening, chairman. I'm Janet Ryon, and I live in the Spring Gully Community, and I'm appalled at how the money was spent for our community. I have a question for the council. Would you give money to the library if you lived in a community where they were flooding at every rain? When it rains, people do not want that area to rain because you can't even get in your yard. Do you have potholes on every street in your community? If your answer is no, then your vote should be no funding for a cosmetic, a cosmetic upgrade versus a health and livelihood of a community. I ask that you think twice about giving all of that money to a library, which we all know they have internet and everything else that people use. It's not as used as much as it was before. Would you please consider, not consider, would you please do what is right by helping our community to be just as good as the community that you live in? Thank you.
Wendell McCray?
Evening. Chairperson, Mr. Morant, and the rest of the council members, good evening. Good evening to all. Listen, I came because of a conversation that I had with my neighbors after a rain and watching to see where the water was flowing. We got a flooding problem. And as the other gentleman just said, the roads, one street you can't even go down. I stopped and asked the people, the folk that were repairing the roads, and I asked them about it, he said, hey, we're not going to mess with that one. It's in bad shape. Not only in Lincolnshire, but White Creek as well. Flooding is a problem, there's no drainage. We've got to have something done about that. Thank you.
Terry Reed?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, council. I'm here also to speak to council and also to the representative for District Four, and I don't see the face up there. And I'm not sure if she can hear us or hear or not, but I would hide my face too, if I represented this... If I represented the people in this district the way you did, I would hide my face too, and that's serious. I wouldn't come out and look at these people in the face, including myself, because it's 2021. And it's a shame that we are still asking for the representative who represent us to do it correctly. When all other communities that have their representative up here, they have parks, we even, we even hear tennis courts mentioned in some areas, when we have nothing. Our children have nothing. Our representative has failed us, has failed the community. District Four, you failed us. So I would hide, I would definitely hide. As a concerned taxpayer and a resident of the Greentown, White Creek, Grave Station... As a concerned taxpayer and a resident of the Greentown, White Creek, Greve Station community, you have failed us. The representation for this area has failed its residents. The proof is in the community. We lack the basic attention that so many communities have been afforded in this county. Our children have suffered. We have no community park for our children to even play in. Mr. Parker mentioned, the only other option is for them to play in the road. With ditches full of water, every time it rained, yards flooded. One of the basic necessities of our children growing up, where childhood memories are important, our children have not been afforded this due to failed representation for our community. If you just look around the county, every other area got parks, recreation. We even talking tennis courts attract the walk around. Ms. Johnson, accept the area that you represent, and this shouldn't be so. Because it ain't right. You're not doing the correct thing. It, it, it ain't right. We need these, we need these in our community. We need this for our children. We need it. Don't give away money when your area need. Our roads and drainage system, they're just horrible. They're just horrible, just horrible. All the roads in that, just horrible. Every time it rains, the community is flooded. We have gravel roads that need to be paved, streets in our community that needs attention immediately. You wouldn't want to ride your bicycle down some of the roads in our community? We just, we need representation for this community, better than what we have gotten. We deserve it. We pay tax like every other residents in this community around Georgetown County. And the sad part about it is when money has been available to address some needs, what do our, what has our council representative did? Give it, why? Give it away, why? Give it away when this area's suffering, need, has been neglected for years? It's been this way for far too long, far too long. Come ride through the communities in your district. Come look at what's going on. Come on. I know you know, but just come out again. We just ask council and those of you up there that represent your community and have answered a lot of needs to your community, please whisper in her ear. Please help us out. Please talk to her for us. You all, whatever you can do, we need that too, because our community is suffering right now. Our community is in dire need. And we here to voice our voices so that you can understand the position we are in, the position our children are in, and the need we have. Thank you for your time.
Madam, madam clerk, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, just like to make a statement before we go to our next speaker. And just want the public to know that we appreciate all the comments that are being made thus far, that have been made thus far. And what we would like for you to do is to talk about the issues. Let us not personalize our comments. We appreciate the comments that you are giving. But let's not personalize it. Let's just talk about the issues so that council can have adequate, have adequate information to move forward, okay? Again, we appreciate your comments. We don't want to take away from them, but we do want you to talk about the issues. Thanks, madam clerk. You may proceed.
Yes, sir. The next speaker is David Doily.
Good afternoon. I also represent, I came here to speak about the, uh, Spring Gully community. Well, you said to speak of the situation. When it rains, my backyard turns into a puddle. In order for me to get to my mailbox after it rained, I have to go get boots. The drainage, the area is so flooded so bad, I had to go out and buy water pumps because the water is coming into my home. This has been going on for years. I've had contractors come in and asked them, what could I do? Could I build it up? And said, until I get better drainage, it wouldn't matter. If I could ask one question to my councilman, how bad must things get before we get help?
Dedric Barnes.
To Chairman Marat, and the rest of the members of council, my name is Dedric Barnes. And I too represent the Spring Gully community. Bro, wins, if you will. These are my boots. Right here. I, I, I want you to catch the mud on them, in the muck, in the mire. And together, these boots represent my family and I. These boots are not because we're anglers and we are fishermen of the many body of waters around us. They're not because we enjoy with any regularity any of the five rivers of the county for sport. These boots are not because we enjoy adventures that land us in our county's ploughmud. Instead, these boots represent what it takes to navigate the swamp that becomes my yard after any degree of rain. These boots represent what advanced degree having, professional tax paying parents have to wear from the front door to their car to get to work or for the children to enjoy what is left of our backyards. Respectfully, members of council, how would any of you feel walking in these shoes? I realize and respect that the genesis of our problem was before the sitting of this body. But after seeing the condition of our roads and yards and to my fellow residents here, our council members have the pictures that you sent in. Ms. Floyd was so nice to, uh, make sure they got them by email since the county system has been hacked. So I hope that after the plea from the residents of the Spring Gully community of District Four have been heard, they are not falling on deaf ears.
Wesley Gibson.
Good evening. My name is Wesley Gibson. I'm speaking for the Citizens for Progress. We're a countywide organization, 501(c)(3). I've received phone calls from all around the county concerning the spending surplus money generated by the one cent sales tax. Constituents in at least three districts are extremely upset with the projects in their district. It was determined that 12.5 million dollars would be considered surplus. County Administrator Christian decided to give each councilman one million dollars to spend on projects in their districts. This is the first time this has happened. It was a brilliant idea by our administrator if the money, if the money was wisely spent. My grandmother used to say, if it's not broke, don't fix it. This program not only is broke, but it's falling apart. These projects in three districts aren't wanted by those who generated the 12 million, 12.5 million dollars in surplus. To me, that's a problem. Residents in the big damn section of District Five called me and were elated when they thought they were getting a community center. This would be a tremendous asset, asset to the community so far away from any kind of recreation in the county. The residents inquired and found that instead of getting a community center for 650,000 dollars, they were getting a recycling center, a place to dump trash. Is this a positive impactful project in the community? They don't think so. Were they consulted by their county representative that a million dollars was available for District Five, and what would they like to see in their community? The answer is no. Where's the communication, council? Residents in District Four, where I live, were extremely surprised and upset to find out that the one million dollars coming to their district plus 169,000 dollars given by other councilmen were allotted to the Georgetown County Library. Drainage, flooding issues, and Greve Station, Greentown, Spring Gully, West End, Plague District Four. A playground has been requested for years in Spring Gully. I also was in the meeting concerning District Four, and we were assured that if any money became available, we would have a seat at the table and determine how our money is spent. This didn't happen. It didn't happen, and we weren't consulted. The county library was built in 1989. The library is 32 years old. It belongs to the county and should be maintained by the county. I read Mrs. Jean Moody left 1.2 million dollars for the library to be renovated. I'm certain through the state library systems, friends of the library, grant monies could be obtained to complete this project. Three million dollars is left over after councilmen's members get their money. Take that money and fund the library. District Four has a multitude of problems. I'm an advocate for parks and recreation. Spring Gully has been requesting a park for years. I see several parks being renovated throughout the district. The park, a park at McDonald's School could be enhanced and renovated to give the young people a safe place to play. Although the land belongs to the school district, the county could work it out like they did when they built the three point million dollar softball complex at Wacama Elementary. Why can't this happen at McDonald's? In closing, council members, one million dollars was a great gesture. However, each council member should have informed their constituents of that billion dollars and asked them what was needed for their community. The system in the county used to choose their projects is broken. Council members should be, should be clear and concise choosing their progress. The people in the three districts are extremely upset how this surplus money is being spent. Citizens for Progress is asking to defer the third reading until the citizens have a chance to confirm with their council member. Before the COVID, the one cent sales tax was being touted by council. I can tell you right now, if y'all don't spend this money right, the one cent sales tax will not happen again. Thank you.
Mayor Frank McClary.
Okay, good evening, everyone. And I, um, and to the chairman and to the council members as well. I will do my best to honor the time that you, that you've set before us here. But I tell you, it's probably take a couple minutes longer to explain what's going on here. I'm not here to, uh, well, first of all, I've spoken to about two thirds of this council over the past five years about the same subject, which is this, um, this capital project sale tax funds and the distribution of those funds as it applies to the laws, the Ordinance 2414-28 and the South Carolina State Capital Project Sales Tax Act. I've spoken to, again, not just verbal, but I provided certified letters to the former administrator, the current administrator, and the current chairman of this board. Again, trying to get you to understand what the law says. Or at least take a look at it. I'm sure you understand to take a look at it. Uh, I am here to speak on behalf of Andrews, project number twenty, uh, project number three, uh, on this, on this list of five that was voted for by the people and for the people. And, and as the laws outline, these five projects were to be fulfilled to a maximum cost before distribution of any of these funds for any other project. Uh, that was not followed. So again, I am here to represent Andrews and to try to have an, try to get an understanding on why Andrews continues to be blackballed by this council for the years and years. Why we continue to be isolated from the development of this county. We are one of three municipalities in this county. And I think we have, we have done our part, I can speak in the last five years, to be better partners and to represent this county as best we can. Andrews over the past five years have opened over 25 businesses, to include several during this pandemic. So I would say that there is confidence that Andrews is now a partner and willing to, uh, do what it takes to make this a better county. Unfortunately, everyone does not believe that. And so that's why I'm here to speak on behalf of this town, and I will continue to do that. And again, I'm not here to challenge these projects on this, on this list. You've heard from the people and how it affects them. But I am here again to challenge the process. I've expressed to you all that this Andrews Police and, and Fire Department complex is the same as what we've occupied for the, for the last several decades. It is one unit, and this new project is one unit. It clearly outlined in, uh, in the ordinance that this project is to be funded. I've expressed to you and provided you a copy of this environmental study that was done on these buildings to show that it is, it is unsafe for the employees and the citizens to come into this building. So I'm not sure why that wasn't convincing. Uh, please, I'll, I'll, I'll speed things up. I've showed you that. I've provided you those letters. I've also outlined to you that in this ordinance and in the state law, it requires for the preparation of- of all projects. That was not funded. I knew there was a problem when I first spoke with the administrator, and he told me that Andrews, the 1.5 million was for, was seed money. There's nothing in any of the laws, the ordinance, nor the state law that considers any of these funds of this 41 million seed dollars. Then to follow up with a document here recently I received from the county on how you have outlined the dispersment of the funds where now Andrews is referred to as direct assistance. All the other projects are listed as the primary. Andrews is now direct assistance. So I think, I think I'm correct when I say that we somehow have been placed outside of the rim of the primary projects. And again, nothing in the ordinance nor the state law allows for that. We have to move beyond our personal feelings and emotions and stick to the law. That's all I ask. And I will read a couple of things here, and then I'll move out of your way. Again, the Capital Project Sales Tax Ordinance Number 2014-28, one thing is stipulated is to, is to provide for the maximum cost of the projects or the facilities funded for the, from the proceeds. And it goes on to talk about the requirement for funds for preparation, designing, engineering, construction, and improvement. And again, that is outlined in all of the legal documents. And it goes on to state if, the estimated maximum cost of the projects, again, which you all, the estimate was 28 millions that you would have collected. You actually collected 41 million. As I said, amounts of the sales and taxes collected in excess of the required net proceeds must first be applied, if necessary, to complete a project for which the tax was imposed, including payment of such sums as may be required in connection with the insurance, bonds, other debt obligations, the proceeds of which are applied from such capital projects. It goes on to read, if the funds still remain after using the funds as described herein, the remaining funds must be used to fund the projects approved by the voters. Not by you, not by me as elected officials. It says by the voters. It must be fun based on the voter's decision. However, if funds still remain after the first using of the funds as provided above, and the tax is not re-imposed, the remaining of the funds must be used for the purpose set forth by Section 4-10330 Alpha 1. And again, that's where it gives county council, again, after all these projects, the requirements have been met, it then gives you the authority to do what the folks that came before me are talking about, reorganize and then look at new projects. That was not done. So I, my, my concern or my, my problem is, again, that we have taken our personal and emotional and then placed that into this process, which it has no place for it, and it has left Andrews project 2.7 million dollars short of the maximum cost. And I, and I don't understand that we've, we've had three turns, if not more, on these funds, and somehow Andrews have not been in the discussion. I have two council members that sit on this, on this council, and I have zero that's, that believe that this is appropriate. We are supposed to be here for the county, but instead of doing the things that these folks have talked about, fulfilling the initial obligation of the sales tax, we think that it's more important to provide 1.8 million dollars to some kind of multimodal path in Waverly Mills. 1.8 plus million dollars. I don't understand that. I don't understand that. And again, I'm not here to challenge this thing, but this one particularly stands out to me because with all of I've heard from the people here and all of what I've heard or what I've experienced myself personally in Andrews, I don't see how you came to this conclusion. And as these folks have asked you, I'm asking you and encouraging you to please go back and take a look at the laws, and once you fulfill the initial obligation, please consider what these folks are talking about, the needs in their community. Thank you.
Marcel Brown.
Good afternoon. I'm a resident of Spring Gully in Greentown Section on Oxford Lane. This afternoon, I would like to discuss the drainage problem in my area. I live on the corner of Oxford Lane and Lincolnshire Drive where there, where there is a drainage grid located that needs to be cleaned out so the water can run properly. When it rains heavily or have a bad thunderstorm, the water doesn't go anywhere. My front yard, the water settles. The backyard is even worse. Over the years, we had to replace our carpet because of the water that is coming in our den. I have to park my cars in two neighbors' yard when the yard is so awful. Something needs to be done about the drainage problem and other problems in our area you are going to hear about tonight. As a resident, I'm tired of this problem. People who come to visit have to walk in mud or find parking where they are not in the water. This problem needs to be corrected within our community. I thank you for my time, and thank you for the time of the other residents, and have a blessed night.
Mr. Chairman, that's the final speaker.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And thank all the speakers for their comments to you, council.
Excuse me, excuse me.
We'll move forward with the approval of minutes. We have minutes from our regular council meeting of January 26, 2021, and February 9, 2021. And we can, unless there's some objection from council, we can approve both of those minutes at the same time with one motion. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, who made, who made the initial motion? I'm sorry. Did you get who made the initial, okay, Councilman Carolina, okay, and second by? Is there any discussion on the motion? Do the roll call with the ANA. Councilmember Anderson? You're, you're muted. Councilmember Carolina? Councilmember Carolina?
Yay.
Councilmember Goggins?
Yay.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yay.
Councilmember Newton?
Yay.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yay.
And the chair of voters is yay also. With the approval of the agenda earlier, four matters were included on the concerned agenda that have been approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. It's item 6A, 6B, 6C, and 6D on our agenda. We move on down to public hearings. Our first public hearing will be open regarding Ordinance Number 21-02 and ordinance to authorize the sale of parcels located within the Andrews Business Park located along Highway 521 as being surplus property. The public hearing for that particular ordinance is now open. Are there any speakers for the public hearing? Hearing none, we move, hearing none, the public hearing regarding Ordinance Number 21-02 is closed. We move on down to the public hearing regarding Ordinance Number 21-05 and ordinance allocating the remaining 2014 Capital Project Sales Tax surplus proceeds for capital projects and other matters related there too. Floor is now open for comments regarding Ordinance Number 21-05. Hearing no additional comments, I hear no comments. The public hearing regarding Ordinance Number 21, 21-05 is now closed. We have some appointments to boards and commissions. I understand that there's a, an appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission by Councilmember Bob Anderson.
Sir, that be the case, I would like to recommend that we, that you folks approve Mr. Fred Rourke to the Parks and Recreation Board. I've known Mr. Rourke for about 20 years. He raised two young boys over here in Poliz Island. They played youth sports in our Parks and Rec program and played high, junior and high, and high school sports, and I think he'll be a real asset to that commission. Thank you.
Is, is that in the form of a motion, Mr. Anderson?
That is a formal motion, sir.
Okay, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Thomas. Any discussion? I'll do the roll call. Councilmember Anderson?
Yay.
Councilmember Carolina?
Yay.
Councilmember Goggins? Councilmember Johnson?
Yay.
Councilmember Newton?
Yay.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yay.
And the chairman's vote is yay also. We're still doing appointments, and I understand there's an appointment to the zoning board of appeals by Councilmember Remi Newton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I nominate Harry Coker. He's a husband, father, and a very proud grandfather. He's a lifelong resident of Andrews. He is retired from International Paper Company after many years of service. He has been a devoted community volunteer in the county as well as the town of Andrews and, and many functions. And he also has served his country in the armed forces. So I nominate Mr. Harry Coker for the Board of Appeals.
And that is the form of a motion. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, may I have a second on the motion, please?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion? We'll go, we'll call the roll for the votes. Councilmember Anderson?
Yay.
Councilmember Carolina?
Yay.
Councilmember Goggins?
Yay.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yay.
Councilmember Newton?
Yay.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yay.
And the chairman's vote is yay also. Councilmember Everett Carolina, excuse me. I understand you have an appointment for the zoning board of appeals.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. My motion is to reappoint this Eileen Johnson again to the commission board. She's done an outstanding work, outstanding citizen, and her viewpoint on the perspective of how county government should operate. And I make a motion for her continuing support on the zoning board.
Thank you, Councilmember Carolina. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Councilmember Johnson. Any discussion? Okay, we'll, we'll do the roll call vote. Councilmember Anderson?
Yay.
Councilmember Carolina?
Yay.
Okay, Councilmember Goggins?
Yay.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yay.
Councilmember Newton?
Yay.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yay.
And the chairman's vote is yay also. We don't have any reports on resolution proclamations. We'll go down to the third reading of ordinances. Is there a motion for approval of Ordinance Number 21-02 and ordinance to authorize the sale of parcels located within the Andrews Business Park located along Highway 521 as being surplus property? This is the third reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that, that we approved the ordinance.
Is there a second?
The second?
Second.
Okay, who's second? I couldn't, I didn't get it.
I think I was first, Goggins.
Goggins, okay. Councilmember Goggins second. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, we'll do the roll call vote. Councilmember Anderson?
Yay.
Councilmember Carolina?
Yay.
Councilmember Goggins?
Yay.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yay.
Councilmember Newton?
Yay.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yay.
And the chairman's vote is yay also. We move on down to the third reading of Ordinance Number 21-05 and ordinance allocating the remaining 2014 Capital Project Sales Tax surplus proceeds for capital projects and other matters related there too. Is there any motion, is there a motion regarding that particular ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman. Firstly, I'd like to say thank you to those citizens that came out to speak tonight. Your concerns have been heard. We will move forward to reevaluating the situation. And at this time, I make a motion to defer Ordinance Number 21-05. And with that, this will allow us to connect with our constituents, dialogue, and make decisions in the interest of the respective districts and these projects.
We have a motion by Councilmember Carolina to defer Ordinance Number, to defer a third reading of Ordinance Number 21-05. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I was seconding it.
Second by Councilmember Lilian Johnson. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, don't have any difficulty deferring, but provided there's some time considerations offered or given. How, approximately how long are we talking about deferment, would we, we think?
We are looking at having the discussion on this matter at our next meeting and try to make a decision at that particular time. The third reading would be done our next meeting if it's deferred. It's deferred for one meeting. If there, if there may be a, an amendment to the motion to, to reflect that, then maybe one, if you can make that motion to reflect that, it will be heard at our next council meeting, deferred until our next council meeting.
Okay, I wouldn't want to put undue pressure on the councilmen, but I do think we would like to move other parts of the, of the program and, and as forward as expeditiously as possible and bring some resolution, but I don't know that we need an amendment.
I think what we need to look at also during the deferment period, we ask that the, the parties consult with the administrator to try to come to a reasonable resolution of the issues that have been discussed this evening.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Member of the Council, this is Tommy Morgan, the interim county attorney. And just to address Councilman Goggins's question with regards to a particular time, the council can make a motion to lay on the table for a particular time, therefore establishing within the bounds of that motion, that time period. So whether it be the next meeting, as the chairman has indicated, or whether it be the two weeks, two meetings from now, you can make that motion to lay on the table for a particular time, and that way it sets it up for, with particularity, both for council to have the timeframe to know what considerations they need to make as well as for the public as well.
Mr. Chairman, a question to Councilman Johnson and Councilman Carolina, and perhaps yourself. Would 30 days provide enough time for you meet with your constituents and have a resolution ready for the, for the council?
Did you say 30 days?
Yes, ma'am. 30 days or two meetings from now at the latest.
Okay, I will try because the meeting would not just involve me. It would involve, I believe, the highway, the state highway department as well as Mr. Funny. So it all depends on their schedule, but hopefully we'll be able to connect with them as well as some of the residents of the Spring Gully area.
As for my meeting, we're going to be moving quickly as possible to establish a meeting and discuss the issues. So within seven day period of time, we'll be good.
Madam, Madam Administrator?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'll answer you at the mic. Any comment you have during our discussion?
Yes, sir. Certainly on the staff level, we will move as quickly as possible to facilitate any meetings that you need to have with our staff and with state officials, so we can certainly try to make that happen within the next 30 days or two meetings from now.
But well, here's a probable suggestion. What we probably can do, we can see where we are at our next meeting, and we can make a decision whether to defer it again. If not, just defer it with no particular time period per se, but we have the understanding that we can move forward with it during that particular time period.
Yes, sir.
Any comments or suggestions regarding that?
Yes, sir. We can certainly.
Instead of putting us in a box for a particular time period?
Yes, sir. We certainly can work toward that, and I will work with all counselors as needed.
Thank you. All right, there's a motion on the, any any further discussion? Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second to defer third reading of ordinance number 21-05. We're going to call for the vote on the motion to defer. Councilmember Anderson? Councilmember Carolina?
Yay.
Councilmember Goggins?
Yay.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yay.
Councilmember Newton?
Yay.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yay.
And the chairman's vote is yay. We do not have any second reading of any ordinances. We do have first reading of of one ordinance, ordinance number 21-09, and I'll just read it into the record by title only. It's ordinance number 21-09, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of the First Amendment to an existing fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement by and amount Georgetown County, South Carolina, G2 Composites LLC as successor in interest to MHG OZ Fund 1 LLC and Eagle Commercial LLC as successor in interest to MHG OZ Fund 2 LLC to effect certain modifications there, too, and other matters relating there, too. Are there any council briefs in our committee reports? There, okay, and there are no reports to council. This concludes the county council meeting's agenda as of February 23, 2021. If there is no further business, the chairman will call for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Prior to saying the meeting's adjourned, one thing I neglected to say, our next meeting will be held, will not be held virtually, but be held in person at the Howard Center. So we'll be seeing you next at our next meeting at the Howard Auditorium. Now, there's a motion to throw to for adjournment, the meeting is not adjourned. Thank you. Y'all have a great evening.
A good day.